The whole with a roll call would be Craig.
Yes.
Jan.
Yes.
Kai Sa.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
And myself. Item one B is the administrative reports. No, I'm pulling it up. It's awkward because it's. All right. What's the? Let's start at the bottom, Dr. Rex Stiles.
All right. Fantastic. I just had one quick item. We haven't talked much about OVA recently and they just finished their semester. So we are sitting with, we have three students that are 4K five. And then one middle school student and six high school students that have completed their semester and are now part of.
All right. Jan.
We are currently working, working through and analyzing the mid-year budget targets. Meeting with any of the department heads to discuss any concerns they have with where they are to budget through January. And also continued work on that 2425 budget. Dr. Stiles and I are going to be giving presentations to staff on February 19th. Uh, we're building current budget.
You know, um, obit that you've.
Okay.
Not our delay, it's their delay. So we're, yeah. Okay. Lindy.
Mine is a full presentation. Are you ready for that?
Do you want?
Now? Yeah. Okay. All right.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Were your kids in their current classes at the time?
They were. I've got to call them that one time. But the millennial version?
I hope.
It wasn't, no.
No.
No. Yeah, it was fun. All right. Uh, so our district is required to have a library plan and we, we need a team, you'll get to see that soon. Have put together a comprehensive library plan for you. I'm going to go over our slides. Feel free to jump in at any time with questions. If you're on testing. There we go. Okay. Um, so a library plan, um. I didn't. Okay. Let's see if that works now. All right. So, um, we are required to have a long range library plan that guides the work that our specific libraries and our district as a whole does. And we are required to communicate that plan with all stakeholders. And so we are taking care of that now. Uh, the elements of a district library plan are an assessment of our current programming, uh, the creation of structured goals based on priority areas with a, within a timeline. Uh, they are smart goals. We have to take a look at and account for the budget items under the common school fund expenditures. And we had to take a look at current board policies and current library procedures and guidelines and tie those into the plan. And final stop is the school board approval. So like I said, um, while I'm up here presenting, um, this is not a Lindsay project. This is a team of people. Marcia is here, so if there are questions, she's going to be able to jump in and answer those as well. Uh, Marcia did an incredible amount of work, um, collecting a lot of evidence and artifacts for the library plan. So thank you, Marcia, for all the extra time and effort that you put in. Brian Marks and Carleen and Erica Stenson were all also very core members of the library plan because it does include technology pieces as well. And then of course, Dr. Stiles as well. Uh, so the history of library planning in Osceola is that the last time we started a library plan was in the 2018, 2019 school year. Um, so there was a link to that, some self-reflection that happened at that time. And then you might remember something kind of big happened during the next school year, COVID. Um, so, uh, it was kind of put on pause at that time. Um, previous to that, we had a combined district library and tech plan and those were required to be together, um, until 2012. Now we don't need a separate tech plan. Um, and again, this is a collaborative effort with a lot of stakeholders. Uh, this is an interesting fact that library plans have been required since 1974. And, um, we, our district was not alone in feeling kind of a sense of urgency around the initial December 5th, um, deadline for submission of library plans. And that's why the state extended that deadline and, um, because of the importance of putting a lot of time and effort into creating a really comprehensive library plan. Uh, state law, like I said, does require that. Uh, library plans can be written for one to five years. Our library plan is for three years, this current school year, and then the following two. Um, that's based on the advice that we got from some experts. Because library sciences change, it changes a lot as technology continues to unfold. Um, our plan will be submitted following board approval. And then because it's after the December 5th snapshot, it will be included as part of the 2024, 2025 snapshot that's used to complete our report cards. Here is the state statute. Um, so there are four different parts to that. There are, these are some infographics from DPI about the future ready librarian framework and then, um, student learning within the library. So in the 2018, 2019 school year, the team that worked on the library plan identified two different focus areas um, of that previous future ready librarian circle. So they're called wedges. So the first wedge was the robust infrastructure. And, uh, thanks to COVID, uh, we did very well with meeting that goal. Uh, we were able to and had to be really responsive to the needs of that time. And, um, we were able to do a lot of, um, increases to our infrastructure. So we did very well on that priority area. Then our other area was, uh, the budget and resources. And once again, um, big, uh, part of that is investing in digital resources, um, to support learning. So we did well, um, on that focus area too. So as we, as a collective library team planned forward, we did a self-reflection process and we took a look at were there any big obvious needs? And there were some, um, but also not really, nothing that, um, stood out as, uh, you know, ma- a major big deal type of thing, but it was fairly easy for us also. Um, with that said, to focus again on our two priority areas and to make some goals around those areas. Um, we also needed to consider what would help us accomplish our district goals. So we took a look at the student staff goals and we want to make an impact on those goals moving forward. And then we took a look at the, um, strategic plan that the board and community and staff did. And we, um, are aligned in three of the core strategies within the strategic plan. And then we created smart goals. So our first, um, priority area is, uh, data and privacy, uh, with, for the digital citizenship piece. So you'll see we have two different goals there. Uh, we are looking to create a formal instructional plan for digital citizenship. And then we know that it's not enough to just create that plan, but we need to have really intentional ways that we continue to talk about and, um, support the work of that, um, that, that, that needs to happen within that instructional plan. So here's the goal alignment part. Um, and why that came up as one of the biggest focus areas and priority areas is because there are, um, di- digital citizenship, uh, standards. And we have board policy around, um, instructional practices with, um, digi- digital citizenship. So that's some of the why. And then we just have our how listed there. We have already started that work. And our second priority area is collaborative leadership, um, with the district media specialists and library paraprofessionals. So we have two different goals. That's that the district media specialist and library paraprofessionals will meet individually and as a group to, um, encourage that ongoing collaboration, professional development and learning, and to review, um, the collection data. And then our other goal is to increase, um, the collaboration around, um, the purchasing of materials using common school funds. So our district media specialists, um, were looking to create a plan for more collaboration with that. Got our goal alignment. Um, the why is really about that continuous improvement piece and to make sure that we are even more compliant with, um, that statute that I showed earlier. I did take time to meet with several of the library paras and they are excited about, um, this focus area. They're, um, we've got new people in several of those places, so they're excited about that. Um, moving forward, the library plan will meet regularly. Uh, we will continue to work with and collaborate with the district leadership team. The, like I said earlier, the plan's written through the, um, 2025, 2026 school year. Uh, part of the library plan process is that you will get an update annually on how we are doing toward, uh, those goals. And then a new plan that, um, will need board approval will be worked on and created and ready to present, um, sometime in the spring of 2026. We also have some unofficial goals. We have goals of increasing, uh, library plan awareness and participation. So once we obtain board approval for the plan, I'll, I'll be handing it out to all district staff and inviting them to join our planning team if they have interest in doing so. Uh, they'll also get the annual, um, update and will continue to seek feedback and input on focus areas. So these are all things. When I said it was a lot of work, it was a lot of work for Marcia. It's a lot of collection of different artifacts and items, so that, that's everything. And then our actual library plan, um, was put into a website format and, um, because that's an easy way for us to both share it with DPI via, um, our Y's, um, portal. And also we will be able to post it to our website, um, in the curriculum instruction area too. So Eva will use. Uh, so when you're checking this out, our, um, our website has different, um, tabs across the top. And, um, you can check out different components of the library plan, but I'll run into it. If there's anything. You want April to click on any of those tabs or press the top if you.
Is that on our website?
It's, it's not yet. Um, it's, it's linked in the slides. Um, I wasn't, I didn't post it on this school website until board approval happens. Um, so this website is only live to people that have the link in the slides. Yeah. So our two priority areas and goals are listed there. Uh, the tab that April was on before, the library program analysis, is a directed self-reflection that we went through on each of those eight different wedges of the, um, future ready librarian framework. Uh, so that wasn't our document, that's DPI's document that we walked through. That's what really helped us, um, to be able to create or find those priority areas. Um, the budget tab, um, is our compliance with showing how we allocate, um, the common school funds budget to different, um, heading areas like newspapers and non hardware tech, um, pieces. And there's the policies and procedures. Um, so I had, uh, we had to, uh, gather all of the board policy that had to do with library media services and then, um, show alignment with our two priority areas and goals. And then this required documentation piece is where if you're interested in seeing the collection analysis that Marcia worked really hard and together for all the libraries and a lot of other documents. Those are linked there. The timeline for implementation and review includes, um, the timeline that we are currently working on. And then we do have forms ready to be able to, um, document and guide our reflection work. And some criteria for, um, if we meet our goals early, um, what we will do. And if we are not on track to meet our goals, probably will respond as well. All right.
Questions for Lindy. Well, thank you to you and your team for all the hard work. I know it's a lot of hard work.
It was definitely a team effort. Really great team.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We're just with Jeff Lee Dorson.
Okay. Um, so working on the early learning grant, because this has pretty fast loaded a couple of times. Um, still just kind of honing in on the professional development curriculum and then the inclusion-based materials and supplies for those early learners. So those three and four-year-olds that we service in special education. Uh, we finished the access testing, so it's a big celebration for Caitlin Carlson, Erin Morrison, and Nicole Brownly made sure that all was completed, that window closed February 2nd. And now just kind of starting to prep for the ACT, the pre-ACT and the board. So lots of work being done with Charlene and special education teachers and making sure we're getting kind of all of those accommodations input and making sure it's up to date and accurate. And then last week, I had the opportunity to attend, uh, connecting trauma-sensitive schools to special education behavior process with our school psychs. And it was just an awesome training at CISA. Um, a lot of wonderful takeaways about how to incorporate more trauma-sensitive language and just different principles into writing our functional behavioral assessments. So those are key components of a lot of evaluations we do. And then also transferring that into some positive behavioral intervention plan. So it was a lot of ton of information, really, really great stuff.
Thank you. Scott Eaton.
All right. Um, we are in the middle of our wellness week. And, uh, in the past historically, our wellness week was organized and ran by our Oscar. And I think there's been a kind of a transition without Oscar and their, uh, mental health matters group is starting to take over like a lot of the activities. And that is led by Claire Patterson and also I know Dr. Stiles is part of that as well. Um, and a lot of the activities during the week are done during lunch. Uh, we're not supposed to impact the day, but today we had the opportunity, we brought back movie of the message this year. And, um, the movie was Lock, Ride, Rodeo. And, um, anytime you bring in together high schoolers altogether is scary. I'm nervous more than ever now that I am also principal, so I feel responsible for that. Then we got to also bring in 128th graders, which we did. Um, I, for me personally, I would tell you the experience was a great experience. The movie, of course, it's, it's based on a true, um, life experience that happened, um, with the individual, what the kids didn't know. And the movie, you know, I think these kids want to see action packed up all the time. So, you know, like that can be, I'm going to say at school at times, it was, it was a great movie. But then we were able to bring in the person, um, Amberly Snyder to speak to the kids for an hour. A little over an hour today, and that was very impactful. And everything that she has overcome and worked to become and is doing for this day. So if anybody hasn't watched the movie, I don't want to give it all away, but definitely watch the movie. But, um, we had a great afternoon with our kids. Uh, and overall, the kids performed well as well, you know, a couple of things, but took care of it. Um, at the high school, we are, we finished up now our, we're a little behind, I'd say, just because of the year has been, of course. But we completed our department meetings with all staff, uh, this last week. And, um, and planning for, for next year and scheduled for next year is coming around the bend a little bit. Um, on March 20th, we, we are planning to have our incoming eighth grade freshman meeting. We're also going to offer this year, um, another parent meeting for all families in the high school now. Um, we felt like, we talked to the people when they come in as freshmen, but then I think there's kind of, there needs to be refreshers. So for example, like if a student now is taking geometry as a freshman, okay, where are the next steps you take moving forward to sophomore, junior, senior? So we're hopefully provide that opportunity for parents to come back and, and listen to us again. We'll see how it goes, but, um, I think anytime we can do it, communicate with our parents is a, is a good thing. And then coming up here this weekend, we are hosting Donkey basketball. And, um, this is a fundraiser for our Link Crew, um, organization. And this is the high school in Saturday, 9:00. Um, we are also then after that holding a mini lock-in for our freshmen with our Link Crew from whatever time Donkey basketball is over with until midnight, basically. And so, and basically I cannot, part of it is I get to midnight and I'm, I'm worth nothing. So we stopped at a midnight and hopefully the parents come pick your kids up. It's usually a great experience for the kids though. They'll do a lot of gaming and things like that, it'll be fun.
Awesome. Thank you. Amanda Meyer.
All right. So, um, I got to help plan both in services for the middle school and high school, so that was a treat. Um, the middle school is mostly focusing on their math data. We took our math test not too long ago and so a teacher will get a chance to give that data and sort through it and then they'll create their intervention groups based on that. So a lot of time will be spent, um, just really thinking about intentionally how we finish up here before, um, forward testing and how we group kids and what we need to do for them before that forward test. Um, and then kind of similarly at the high school, we're working on, um, uh, getting ready for the ACT. So they just took their second methodized test and, oh, excuse me, Horizon now. And got that data back. We had sessions, then actually had, had them do some extra sessions with every department that, um, has an ACT connected to them, learn a little bit more about that data. So they'll be spending some time doing that and then of course, just talking through the course planning stuff that we've been working on here. Um, and then on top of that, we're starting our transition from middle school to high school. So those eighth graders, we'll start that with our special ed scheduling and then start getting our, our eighth graders over to the high school. Um, and learning all about their transition. Um, just curriculum coordinator wise, we're in the process of ordering materials for, for ELA English grades six through 10. And then same thing with social studies, we did some review, um, looking at sample books and then figuring out what we are ordering. So kind of in that process right now. Um, and then I wanted to just thank Dr. Rubin and Mr. Mr. Newton for all of their work helping transition me to my new role. It's been a lot of learning and we're all transitioning at the same time, which is so much fun. But we're doing it and it's, it's going really well, so thank you to that. And then I, I invited Sunny everybody, I wanted to thank Renee Sluski to Institute Council. We had our last after-school party a couple of weeks ago and we got our cotton, we did a circus theme this time, which we've never done before. And we got a cotton candy machine lost and we went on a hunt for it and found it. It was at like Poco Loco or something. We didn't study, we didn't have time, but, uh, we got it like 45 minutes before the party started and I was covered in sugar from Snow Coens and cotton candy machine. So it was a wonderful end to middle school parties.
Sounds like a lovely journey for you.
It was great.
All right. Well, thank you. Uh, Karen Eman.
Well, we too, so it's a big transition. I'm still learning, so thank you to Mrs. Meyer for kind of helping guide me through that transition. The staff has been, have been great and learning their names and then learning their names again when I forget half of them because I've got home at 12:00 tonight and I'm just inundated with all that information. I'm just trying to develop those relationships, make those connections, call home. And it was fun to call home to old friends and acquaintances, making connections that, uh, I love them also. I really appreciate that. Uh, we had school counselors week last week. We did an extra special with, uh, our counselor Lisa, um, and her baby girl on Monday. So everything is going well there. Uh, so we're transitioning, uh, with a new counselor as well, a substitute. So today was her first day in district. Exciting. Um, so thank you for all that they do. Uh, we had Bryce McCall plays fourth on a thirteen at the regional spelling bee. He's an alternate to the state competition coming up in March. So conduct him if he is selected. And then the longness for N16 team had their, uh, had all seven entries advanced, um, to the next level.
Thank you. All right, Julie Bender.
Hey, hi. So, hi. I'm going to start with the intermediate school. Um, today for Valentine's Day, we were in our third annual, like, trendish, or tradition at the intermediate school where we are not sharing Valentines amongst each other, but instead we create them and then student council gets on a bus and heads downtown and shares the, they share the Valentines out to the community. So we've always received such great feedback with that from, from the different places that we go. And we try to hit, we hit the hospital, Royal Oaks, Eagle Ridge, Senior Living Center and the Christian Community Home. I don't think I'm missing any. That's all of them, I think. Um, and yeah, they're, they know we're coming now and it's, it's pretty exciting. So the kids make all of these different Valentines and wish them all these different kindness messages. So it's a pretty cool, cool thing for our students at the intermediate school. Um, our pop tag, pop tab competition is underway. So kids get super excited about this as well. You never know what's going to come in their buckets or their Ziploc bags. There are times when we see much more than just pop tabs, but we roll with it. And it's, it leaves for a fun conversation. Uh, spring concert, all swing, uh, here we go. The theme is decades, so it's going to be, um, all the way back from like the 30s all the way to where we are now. Uh, so kids are excited about that. Fifth grade, of course, wants to continue with the tradition of the song where the lights go off and they're all jumping around with the neon things and then almost break the risers. It's fine. They have not broken yet, but one of these days. So everybody's really excited about that. It's, it ended up being a tradition without even trying to be a tradition. So that's happening on May 10th. Um, I'll talk about our wellness week stuff with both buildings because we're kind of trying to merge some of that stuff. So elementary school, uh, the 4K learning days, it was a huge success. This was last week. Um, already coming together as a team and looking at different ways that we can, we can improve. Um, it, it was, it was an amazing success and brought in over 115 families. So right away I was like, oh my gosh, I can't wait to tell the board like 115, you know, families are enrolling. And then I was like, wait a minute, that's not right because it's two days. So it's two days, the second day is birth to three. Um, so I had to calm down for a second, but 86 families have enrolled 4K at this point. Um, so that, that is a celebration. They're all very excited, um, had really good questions and, and it was really nice to, to bring in these families. A lot of them were former students. But it's, it is, it's really neat to say, like, and remembering them and it's just, it's a, it's a cool thing. So.
Is it?
Yes. Yes, it is. Especially when, you know, you recognize when they'll bring up a story about, oh my gosh, you remember that one time? I don't remember that. Yes, I remember that. You know, I'll just, and that they stuck around, they want to come back here, I think, is, is the coolest piece in hearing. Some of them be like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bring my kids anywhere else. And it's just like, yeah. I mean, it's just, it's neat to hear. Um, so that, that was a lot of fun. Uh, so a huge thank you to the whole 4K staff, everybody who put their hands in, in making that, those two days so successful. So a huge shout out to everybody.
Did you remember 4K or tell me that he signed himself to 4K?
Yes. Signing up, lots of pictures, yep, lots of. Oh yeah. The big overgrown pencil, the whole thing.
The biggest one you've ever seen?
Yeah. Me too. So also, uh, at the elementary school, we are trying to find. So also, uh at the elementary school, we are trying to find ways of bringing bringing more families in and kind of bringing that kind of stuff back. So looking at continuing with the mystery readers, but then going for things like donuts and grownups, read through peeps. Adding on the Read Across America, like all these different pieces of where we can try to bring, um really just looking at it as like grownups. And even if we have to, you know, call up the seniors, hey, come on in, let's sit down in and read with our kindergartners. Just di- different things of opening the doors and bringing in the community. So working with teams on that for yet this year. So that's kind of our goal, is every grade level is gonna do something yet this year. And we are transitioning at the elementary school to host a spring open house, similar to what we've done at the intermediate school. So instead of having those scheduled parent-teacher conferences, we're opening up the building, we're turning on music. And teachers are gonna be ready to just have whoever they want come in, say their hellos and like meet and greet and just talk and have real like informal conversations. And if they want more than that, they can always schedule something. So looking forward to that as well. And then the big thing that four K five specialists are putting together right now is we are doing our first annual wellness night. And this is going to be on Monday, uh Monday night. And we've been working hard on on bringing different community resources together for Resource Fair. We're gonna have lots of things in the gym, we're gonna have things happening in the art room, they're gonna make like a, this cool rat thing because your message with the movie is Ratatouille on how you can be anything and nobody can tell you that you can't. Remember the rat cooks the food and then all the humans eat food that the rat cooked. So it's gonna be this huge big thing with chef hats and signing you up, Newton.
I heard it.
Yep, um and then we're we're giving away um protein balls and recipe cards. And and a really cool thing um with this is they're, they're gonna have a little passport to go around to each little station. And at the end, they they put it in for a drawing where it's pool passes, uh the hospital's working with us. We're getting all the, working like five hundred kilometers from the hospital. They're setting up this whole thing on learn how to cook healthy. Yes, to, here's like a really healthy like cookie recipe that it's not like you're really eating cookies. So all these different things that are coming in and the food trucks. And every kid that walks through the door, four K five, will get a neon green bracelet. And that gets them into the boys' basketball game that night. And then also working with Tyler, working with Scott, Jeff, um you know, just again promoting that basketball game, wishing that we could do it for both boys and girls this time, as it's our first roundabout, we're doing it just for the boys' game that night. But lots of feedback from parents on that too, like how how excited they are that their child gets this bracelet that we ordered off of Amazon that you just stick on like the water parks, but they get to go into the game. So trying to pull it all together and bring those basketball players over and then we'll head to the game after eating a bunch of stuff from the food truck, which is like the meat one up on Highway Eight, I believe. And um uh what is it, Chicken Chicken Coffee Putt? What's that one called? There it is, Chicken Poop.
I think maybe that's a good opportunity to do with the chicken coffee.
It's one of, it's, there's two, there's two coming. So it's very exciting, I hope that everybody comes. It's a free event, come in, walk around, have fun, there's gonna be, I mean, there's a jumpy house.
That you're meaning?
I'm gonna pass out protein balls. And my chef hat.
Awesome. Any questions? Thank you for the admin support, everybody. That brings up item two, improving our academic achievement with accountability to data-driven practices and a budget update.
So we're in January, which is for the fiscal first half of the year. I'm sorry, we're in February.
Yeah, I am, yes.
Yes, we are, we're halfway through January. We will look at um the budget update through the end of January, which is halfway through the fiscal year. And I think this is a report that the board is used to seeing. So nothing new here. Obviously, our target for those percentages for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year at par, you know, we like to see those hanging right around fifty percent. Couple of things to point out on the salary piece, teacher salaries are gonna be a little bit behind because the way that we pay the teacher contracts, those pays from July not always get pushed back into this fiscal year. So you will see that lagging a little bit behind with those other percentages. A couple of things to to point out about what I look through and look at this, you know, obviously, I do look at each individual line item. If something is really egregious, we will dive deeper into it. However, I, from a broad perspective, will just take a look quickly at those bottom lines. So you're looking at, from an object perspective, salaries and then the benefits. Going down into what we call the three hundred services, which are like refresher services. Some payments to the states, the four hundreds are your supply levels, um five hundreds are your capital objects, six hundreds, seven hundreds. That operating transfer to special education will not happen until the end of the year. We're now the des- vessels and we know exactly how much that we have to move over there. Overall, from a district perspective, you can see that we are trying to get forty-three points, eleven percent for the year, so slightly under, which is good. We're entering that time now where we will start watching those purchases and becoming a little bit more strict on that timeline. Probably looking at that April fifteenth deadline for stopping those purchases. I'm guessing that's not new to the district, that's pretty good one every district. And then looking at the.
Sorry, I was looking at Amanda, I'm like.
So then we will start uh doing the year-end calculations.
So I had a question for you, and I should have emailed it ahead of time, but I apologize. When I was looking at uh sort of three sixty code, which is technology and software services. And maybe not even that one, but there was another tech one as well. And it looks like we went over budget last year, we're over budget this year. Is that something then that we reconsider? I mean, obviously, we pay it, but I'm wondering.
So we'll take a look at, look at five-year trend on that then, that's when I say we look at individual lines and dive a little bit deeper. Call a five-year trend, see what's making up that money. Is it something that may get coded incorrectly that I need to do a inventory to remove it? Or is it really that, yep, that's a under-budgeted line, so we need to then add more money to that line?
Other questions on this budget report? Item three, engaging continuous improvement of student support systems and programs, review the second Friday in January.
I think you have it in front of you as well. April does an amazing job, she's the one who runs this entire show, so it feels awkward to be the one actually having a conversation about it because I don't need to show up at the meeting, she does it all with the team of people super effectively. You can see we're down a few students. And April also included uh on the table of overtime, because I know that this group likes to look at things overtime. Again, one thing that makes us really special here in Osceola is when you look at the head count in blue, remember that includes all the students? But the Branconia students don't show up when you look at our numbers, so that can be really tricky when you're talking to people. And also, um April did a really nice job, you see they're highlighting head count in black, it's the third column to make sure that we're all looking at the exact same numbers. April, was there any to add?
I'm trying to pull up that snapshot, you can look at the comparisons from the last five years. So I just added it. And that's the one that you have printed in front of you as well. So here, this gives you a comparison of right where we landed this January, this top column. And then down towards the bottom, you can look back at the last couple of years. And then I did put to where we fell here to our September third Friday count. But really, it's the admin secretaries in the building, they're doing all the attendance reports, making sure that they have the right students and the right entities. I sit down and meet with them and just highlight for the state.
They can move.
Right.
The kids move.
We're not opening them, I mean, doing. Open roll out or not, or?
They could move, they could open roll out, we saw.
And no, we had kids go in and out of the district during those two time frames. So if we keep a reconciliation sheet so we can keep track of what what the difference was, but it was, everything everyone said, it was homeschool, open roll out, the students move out of district, the students come in the district, so it was kind of a mix of all those scenarios. And that's every year that I've been here, that we've seen those changes.
Thank you, Amanda, thank you, I'm an assistant for all the hard work on the numbers. Item four, aligning, developing and supporting our staff. Item A is review summer school compensation.
We have three items to talk about as far as wages go and we have a chart in front of you. In particular, summer school can be tricky. Those of you who've been around for a while know that the the funding for summer school salaries for home school changed dramatically in two thousand and twelve. It went from hourly rate teachers to twenty-five dollars an hour. And it stayed that way for about five years. And then it went to twenty-seven and that was, take big, take our base wage, it would be hourly, and that's where the twenty-seven dollars came from. And doing that right now, you can see if we do the base wage, so it'd be a plus zero, it's one now, it's about twenty-nine seventy. And you can look at what our staffing typically is the last three years for summer school. You have summer school, people here, we can tell you that it's, can be a challenge to become a fully staffed summer school program. And looking at the idea of moving from twenty-seven dollars to thirty dollars an hour for summer school. But wanting to talk that through with you, so that's the teacher piece. Any questions on the teacher piece specifically? There was one thing that I learned, um for some reason, there were people in the district that work here that thought that we pay paraprofessionals differently at some standard rate, and that's not the case, they did their hourly wage. So whatever they are, that's all, so what they did during summer school, so that was good for me to learn from Sharon. The pay that is a little bit, that may perhaps need some adjusting, is the fourteen forty. So that's an adult that comes in to work with our students um for support, is that fourteen forty. And our starting wage for a pair of, for support is sixteen sixty-five. Again, just a discrepancy in wanting to get good people to work with our students during that June time. And then student workers, first year wage, second year wage and after graduation. And you can see all of the historical staffing and where we have been, where we go. And um student workers really depends on the needs of teachers. Like an example would be the way that we use students to deal with the, if they have the summer walk and talk class. The adult can be at the end and the student can be leaving or reverse to make sure that we're keeping track of all our students. Because, believe it or not, the ages that they are, they can get lost down the way to the pool, they can get lost when we walk through children. So just making sure that we have two people in those classes where it's appropriate.
Biking class? Oh, my gosh. I mean, it was front, back, the pokey biker back here with their own student, I need, can't imagine doing that with one person. There's so many variation levels and they're all over town.
Right, and our summer school's really fun, they put really fun, but also having two people at that, well, it's not always a bad thing. Because some kind of all-pleasure basis, you don't want some of the, it just happens.
True story, yes.
So so just wanted you to have the opportunity to see where we've been historically with staffing and dollars and then also what the increase could look like.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So if the proposals, an increase, is that a sustainable recommendation?
Based on what, yeah, based on what we looked at, looked at. And I think y'all have been really clear that we want to take care of staff in the places that we can. This is a place where we can make that impact. It's not a yearly, we aren't suggesting in some districts. This, these allowance get the percentage increase all the time and we have not done that. We have stopped steady and said, okay, well, an increase, when do we have a conversation? So, because you notice like that voluntary assignment coverage, not to jump down there, that was just adjusted in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Well, I always hear that there's a, you know, it's hard to attract teachers for summer school as well. So you gotta find that sweet spot of making it work their while as well to come in and and serve our students in summer school, so.
And during this time, as you're trying to signal, it used to be four hours that they worked and we modified that to four and a half for all staff. And it wasn't intentional to give them a pay increase, it was more about coverage for students. Because having students arrive before teachers and leave after wasn't really working for us. So we did increase hours during the summer too. But that takes that increase, a potential estimated increase, takes that four and a half hours to increase.
Well, the money we get for summer school from DPI that that one, does that cover the summer school costs? With the teachers, the staffing and the supplies and the busing and all of that?
We have pays for them. And then some.
Right, I mean. That's why schools run it, because they can be in money making, but.
We have wanted, because we want kids to have.
Well, that too, and it's a safe spot during the day when.
Absolutely.
Parents are still working, right?
Right.
Parents can't stop working because of summer.
And our, I mean, our summer school enrollment has gone down over the last few years, but that also makes sense when you think about our enrollment. Right, so trying to make really engaging courses with staff members that students love is what we're looking to do.
I also think it's different, like a lot of our parents are home now, working because of COVID, so they, I think, families are more at home.
Sure.
It's just different. Well, and I talked about family that moved in, they were not from here and they have little people in elementary school. And they were planning a trip and the first week of June, and I said, are your kids going to summer school? No, our kids don't need summer school. And I said, oh, well, so something to know is summer school's last in Osceola. And so then my kids started talking about the classes and these parents' eyes lit up and they're like, I'm, I bike down around town and I play basketball and I did all this and so to watch that, that I think, well, right, and I think that's, you hear summer school and you're like, oh, summer school. And I don't ever feel that in Osceola, I mean, all, there's certainly, it's not everybody's cup of tea, but for the most part, I mean, all three of our kids are excited to go to summer school. And and it's not because it, they have to, but because they want to, and I think that speaks volumes as well. So the educators are there, the class offering, all of that.
So the other thing Amanda brought to it too is uh we have eighth graders going to the ninth grade and ninth graders that want to be part of summer school and they volunteer, so they don't get paid. And so they also get the opportunity to come back and do that. So that speaks something, when you have kids that want to be part of a program. I would say the high school summer school perhaps isn't really as fun as the other ones.
What's that?
It's like a food truck. And protein balls and now it's fun.
Well, the other part I think to note is summer school, didn't you do financial literacy for summer school?
I did, yeah.
I think Chad is here, right? So there's also some opportunities, like some credit earning opportunities during summer school that we haven't had in the past, which is really positive.
Did you mean summer school credits?
No, I just, I didn't want to take it during the school year, so I had that opportunity to do it, it was very helpful.
In doing that, did that open up an hour or a hex per year?
Yes, yeah, and so then I got to take uh other classes that wouldn't have fit my schedule otherwise. And since I, you know, have time to do it anyways, it was very helpful to get together with some students, work on it together, just, you know, at our own pace. Because growing up, I I never even had any inclination of a negative connotation when it came to summer school. I would like, when someone talking to me like, oh, yeah, I have to go to summer school, if I'm like a different district, I'd be like, oh, that's awesome. They're like, what do you mean? Like, I love summer school, can't wait for next year.
So let, let me tell you this, my mom called me and she said, I found something of yours from school. And I was like, oh, great, and she goes, your kid's in the kitchen cookbook. And I lit up, because that was one of the highlights of my summer school, was doing kids in the kitchen in middle school. And I'm four years old, so I mean, like, it still sticks with you, right? I'm looking through, like, oh, I remember making this, so I think it is unique to us, like, and it's just what a, what a fun, you can borrow it if you want. No, I still have kids, well, they're not so much anymore. I used to base it, I come from like, remember that baby Thursday, I mean, I've been to Bois and I've still got. Absolutely. Absolutely.
It's an award, Sharon, a lot.
So I, I just think if there's, it's, it's a pretty cool asset that we have, the offering and, and the ability to do it, I think that's pretty cool, so.
Shane, I was, maybe I should ask you. What's our physical work resume?
That's fine, I didn't think to ask it.
I did have a high school kid that got to volunteer last year and I told her, you know, after you get to a certain point, you can apply and be a student worker and get paid. And her eyes went, what? So and I think that's something, that's an amazing piece too, right? Because it kinda gets you in the building and working with kids and that's another career evaluation piece of where do you, where do I see myself as an adult, so.
Alright, anything else on summer school? And then the next one is the PD rate. Again, just an estimate of what it would be if, if it would have been this year. We don't do a lot of summer work like we have in the past, in years ago where it was hundreds and hundreds of hours in the summer. It generally is staff that get new materials that need time. And then the principals of all schedule generally one or two or three different events in the summer. But they bring staff in to ensure that we're ready to start the year. In particular, because we have that flexible in-service time, that allows for the principals to have staff in at different times. And it's part of their contract, so it works out really well. And lastly, the volunteer assignment coverage. And this is something I think that y'all did a great job in the handbook of making sure that it was updated. And it's, if you give up your duty free lunch, it's a half hour, right? It's not, so it's fifteen dollars is what you're getting for that. And if it's a full hour of coverage, then it's the thirty dollars. So, and again, because of the lack of subs, this happens more than it ever did before. And also recognizing when people do give up their prep time, that's a significant dip from them. And we need them to say yes, because it's better for our kids than having nobody or having to combine two or three classes or having little library. And with the littles, we can't do that, so.
Becky, when we look at the bottom right, they're talking about parasubbing, you can see a different position. How does that look with, say you have a certified A who makes fifteen dollars an hour? And you need that person to go to a different room for, to be a para, for a para that makes ten dollars an hour and they're not certified? So they're gonna make that lesser rate of pay then?
No, that they, for the position, they have their own. It's what this is actually talking about is if we have some paras that are also subs, that sub professional staff. So if they are going into some professional staff member, they'll get that.
They're higher.
Higher, yes. We try not to ever do like percentages, have people go backwards when they're doing actual.
Especially when you're telling them, like, I get it, if it's, anyone want to, but you're saying, no, we need you.
Yeah. Isn't that asking? We really need you.
It's like being volatile.
Yes.
So Becky, I have a question. Yeah, so if we were to just do this and make it the hourly rate that the BA was at. So then every time that rate increases because of the wages we do, that it would then continue to increase this pay? And you wouldn't always have to keep bringing it back if we moved to something like that instead? So if we just did it, that would be the hourly rate of the BA step one or whatever? Then it would just change every year.
And, and that, I guess a lot of districts do that intentionally to not get behind. And then you also lose the flexibility to say, oh, no, we're gonna stop here.
I mean, that's the drawback, but at the same time, it's keeping them at. They continue to get an increase for doing the work. That is valuable, so. And you don't go years without rates increase.
So what's the ask for coming? Do you recommend we do that now?
Well, I, I guess I'm bringing it up for a conversation.
Because if that's the ask, that would be a different answer.
Than the thirty dollars, but then when we get to the twenty-four, twenty-five, they already know what that rate will be for summer going forward. And do you have summer school in July? No, we've finished rate. So.
We're not, we're not planning to for the next two years.
Right, but. So it's just a suggestion, I'm not saying we have to, but I'm just saying it's a way to keep their wage.
Right, but with that scenario, I'm just for clarification, I'm sure I apologize to you, is recognition here is the thirty buck, honey, you're sure you're saying, stay twenty-seven, but it will automatically increase to be a plus one level each year.
Oh, there's an agenda either item later tonight? Alright. Anything else on this?
How would that affect the paraprofessional sixteen month, this company month that's low? Because this is at sixteen sixty-five, so where did that?
That, even if it. Those areas, as the support staff, Casey F was up that.
That would go up that.
Because that sixteen sixty-five is just to replace this fourteen forty, right? For the you or good people who don't have like experience with us.
Yeah, that don't currently have a letter with us, so it's in the, that we hire for summer school.
Cool.
So if it's, someone who's been here longer, they will get there.
Anything else?
So no. Nothing, go ahead.
That's, we'll reset until six thirty, so.
No, I'm thinking that.
Okay, alright. Well, if there's nothing else, then we'll reset till six thirty.